You're on.
Gentlemen, all ready to go?
You bet.
Good morning. This is Friday, December 29th. This is the nine o'clock work session to deal with end of the year matters for the Board of Select. Welcome. Winter is here. First item of business is several documents to sign. The first one is this from NHMA. It added words to the first paragraph. This needs to be signed today, according to Grand State News. It's the public hearing for the abandonment of the cemeteries. Have you folks read it?
I think.
Yeah.
The only thing that was changed was the first paragraph.
Okay. So I will move approval of the revised notice of public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. Just hand that to Karen when you're done.
Thank you.
There you go. The next item to sign is the notice for a public hearing to accept the donation. Please approve public notice to put in the Grand State News. Attorney Paffler's information is attached. This is to accept the donation for the cemetery.
Is the amount of fifty thousand?
Yes. It doesn't say here exactly. It doesn't have to allege an amount, I don't think.
Okay.
That's my understanding. Correct? Have you read it?
Uh, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Aye. So move.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Give that to Karen.
Okay.
This is the master electricity service agreement. It's an addendum to the previous paperwork that we signed. You've spoken on it, right?
Yeah. And this adds the one account that was omitted from the original agreement. So it's, I will move approval of the master electricity service agreement to dent them.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
And it's only for one signature. I know there was some discussion at an earlier meeting about when the service under this contract started. And it was signed on the 25th of October and it is in force now. So I don't know if it was that week or shortly thereafter, but we are. If you look at the bills that come through from the co-op, you'll see that the electricity supply charge that we pay is on this contract and not now on their rates.
Pass that down to Karen. Nice job. Thank you for your negotiation. This is notice of intent to cut wood for lot MAP 60, lot two, twenty through twenty-three up on Neal Hill Road. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
These are letters concerning, from the Boy Scouts, Liam Morrissey and Dawson Alwin are being inducted as Eagle Scouts in Wolfboro in the Congo Church, Sunday, January 7th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. First of all, does anyone want to attempt? I'll probably go. Now, the other thing is that she's typed up letters of appreciation or recognition. Okay to sign these?
Sure.
Yep.
Do we need a motion?
I'll move that we sign the letters of appreciation.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your extra effort. Pass that down. The troop master is the guy from Stan Tech, is the work of the dark. Originally, he's from Auburn. That's where his company's from. Small world. Next is a letter from Parks and Recreation. We have someone interested in joining the Parks and Rec Committee. We'd like to recommend that the selectives appoint them to the commission. It's Brandon Woody, W O O D Y. It's for a, his term expires in the year 2020. Is there a motion?
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Lloyd signs and it passes three zero. That's it for the paperwork, right?
Yeah.
And Bill, do you have some?
I do. I have a firm proposal that Jack got for doing the mini-split. Heating, air conditioning units here in the town offices. And this proposal includes adding one here in Mr. Luton's meeting room, which has the benefit, certainly in the summertime, of not having that. Those window air conditioners that are going to be droning on, causing interference with the audio portion of the video tape and that sort of thing.
They're also a security risk.
Good point. So the unit for this room is thirty-five hundred dollars with a six hundred dollar energy efficiency rebate. And we have-
Thirty-five after the rebate?
No, before the rebate. Though, of course, we have the, the rebate just goes back into the piggy bank. It doesn't, it doesn't, it's not an offset. And we have money left in government buildings to cover that this year.
With which account number?
Specifically in the townhouse maintenance and townhouse improvement lines. We have a total of fifty-four hundred dollars between those two lines that's still available this year. And-
Would that be this line here?
Diane, did give us extra copies if you want. I have extra things of the building if you want.
Well, if you look at townhouse improvements, there's two thousand and forty dollars left. Townhouse maintenance, there's thirty-three hundred and sixty-one less one fifty. So there's over five thousand dollars left between those two lines. Now, the unit to go in here is thirty-five hundred dollars. The unit to replace the other units in the town office is slightly higher than the one that he had the estimate for before, but it comes with a twenty-two hundred and fifty dollar rebate. So.
How much does it cost?
I'm sorry?
How much is the price on that one?
The price on the other one is fourteen thousand seven hundred. And we had budgeted thirteen thousand for next year for that. Now, my thought was that we would encumber money to pay for the thirty-five hundred dollar unit. But if the board pleases and we want to encumber all of the remaining funds in those two line items to offset, then that-
So take the eighteen-two out of the twenty thousand total for the buildings? Is that what you're thinking?
Take it out of both.
Oh, I mean encumber it. So the total remaining in government buildings is twenty thousand.
Okay. So we could encumber all of that toward-
Because we've got twenty-four hundred dollars and another five hundred and fifty bucks. So twenty-nine fifty-three grand already out of that.
Right.
So that brings us down to seventeen thousand, so a little way.
Okay. Did we encumber the Cow Island money or not? It says needs, I don't-
No.
So that's something else we need to do with that.
And there wasn't anything else? No, we've got that one for the doors and all that.
Right, right.
We encumbered three seventy-five for town office maintenance, the third item under government buildings. And then townhouse heat?
No, no, it's townhouse maintenance, the one fifty. That's the deep cleaning, right?
Yeah, that's the eighth down.
Yeah.
And that's just the townhouse share of the cleaning.
Right.
And we're, I mean, just walk me through this.
Yeah, we need Cow Island.
On the townhouse maintenance line where it says twenty-four hundred encumbered?
Yeah.
Does that mean that there was sixty-eight hundred dollars on that line to start with?
No, that means-
Two grand was budgeted and twenty-four was carried over.
Right, so the budget included the twenty-four hundred carryover from the previous year.
So is it your suggestion that we just encumber all twenty thousand forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
So move.
Second. Any further discussion?
When we account for, because I'm going to have to sell this to the Budget Committee a little bit here.
You'll write that up forums?
Well-
Well, I'll just, I'll pick out the numbers that we've got gross here.
All right.
We're going to stop spending any other money, I guess. There's nothing else to spend in the next three days.
No, that's right.
We have no other bills pending in that account.
Yeah.
So of that twenty thousand forty-eight dollars, eighteen thousand two hundred of it. While it isn't going to work out, we're going to still have to budget a little bit for the years. We're going to have to go up to a big grand.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Are we allowed to vote on this?
Oh, gosh, yeah.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Does it make sense?
Yeah. With that said, I was just going to say, do you want to now change next year's budget? Because you already put in, was it thirteen thousand for the air conditioning units? So do we want to reduce that by ten?
Has that gone to the Budget Committee yet?
No.
It goes Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So do we want to take some of that money out for next year?
I think we need to.
Yeah.
If we're going to, um-
Was that your improvement?
Well-
We've got eighteen-two plus-
Twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred.
So that's twenty thousand six hundred, right?
Plus five, twenty-five. And that's what we've got is there.
Yeah.
Twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. So.
So what we had-
We're a thousand bucks away from our number.
All right. So what we had budgeted for next year in town office improvements included twenty-five hundred dollars for window replacement that hasn't been addressed in what we just talked about. Plus whatever we need to make up the difference, which you said was eleven thousand dollars.
Uh, yeah, a thousand bucks.
All right. So, uh-
Want to give it to Diana?
Yeah. What we had budgeted? Twenty-five hundred plus a thousand?
I have it right there.
We put thirteen thousand in townhouse improvements for the AC heat units.
So is this thirteen thousand we added?
Yeah. Total of fifteen-five.
Aye.
So fifteen thousand five hundred was added. We've already taken care of all but eleven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
No, no. You got the window replacements that were twenty-five hundred bucks plus the thousand dollar differential that isn't covered by the encumbered, right? That's thirty-
Thirty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, all right. So I move that we revise our budget submission for oh-one-seven-thirty, which is town office improvements, from fifteen thousand five hundred dollars to thirty-six hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
Okay, yeah, I'll second.
Yeah, but before we, yeah, before we get, before we re-vote on it, let's make sure the numbers are right. Which is, I think, what you're doing at this point, right?
Right. I mean, we're going to spend out of seventeen twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, right?
All right, so we got seventeen-two.
Let's make it easy for ourselves. We're going to encumber twenty thousand dollars, sorry, twenty thousand forty-eight dollars.
Right.
Okay. And our gross purchases are going to be eighteen-two, five twenty-five. And what are the other things outside of those?
Five twenty-five and twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four hundred.
Which is the, what's left on the Cow Island survey, right?
All right, right. And then on the pieces that we added for the next year's budget, you're saying only thirty-six hundred dollars of that is in addition?
If I'm doing the math right, thirty-six hundred dollars of what we had in there still remains. Everything else is covered. But let me, let's see, we're talking twenty-six, twenty-one, one twenty-five, and twenty oh forty-eight. So that's, uh, one thousand and seventy- thousand seventy-five plus twenty-five hundred for the winters. So that's, um-
Hopefully, it's somewhere around twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So we're talking thirty, so thirty-six hundred dollars should cover that, uh, that difference.
Okay, if we take the Cow Island and the other five hundred and twenty-five bucks-
Yeah.
Out of what we are going to spend.
Right.
That leaves us with twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars worth of expenses going towards building improvements. Does the math check? I think it, I think it does. I just, the thirty-six hundred is just baffling a little bit.
Yeah, all right. So we're encumbering twenty thousand and forty-eight dollars.
Yep.
And out of that is twenty-four hundred for Cow Island. And five twenty-five, which leaves seventeen one twenty-three, right?
Yeah. And if we add to that thirty-six hundred, we should be at twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Checking on that.
So that would be twenty-one seven twenty-three.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
One thousand seventy-seven plus twenty-five hundred, thirty-five seventy-seven. And we're talking thirty-six hundred. Are we shaving that too close?
Well, I don't think so because the next thing we had, the next step is to approve the building's budget, right?
The bottom line.
And if we just deduct the encumbered funds from that, and do we need eighty-eight hundred dollars in property maintenance and improvements? Because that was this Cow Island survey coming up.
All right. I'm sorry, you lost me.
Okay. What I'm trying to do is come up with what happens to this number here.
Right.
Actually, this number over here.
Okay. So-
So if we take just the amount we encumbered, the three seventy-five for office maintenance, twenty-four hundred for townhouse maintenance, the gross-
No, that twenty-four hundred was encumbered from last year to this year.
Right, but that changed this forty-four hundred from two thousand, right?
Right.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get this number to run. So if we take twenty-four hundred and forty-eight fifty-five, that's seventy-two fifty-five. And then reduce the Cow Island thing by four grand. So we're at eleven two fifty-five, four one thirty-nine nine twelve. One one, one two one.
Excuse me, Chip, this might help.
What's that?
This is what you guys approved at your last meeting. So you've already, like, taken out Cow Island and stuff on next year's budget.
So what do we have for a gross in that?
So it's just that little bit of change right now with the AC units that I believe you're, for next year, that you're changing. Which you, yeah, if that makes sense. So from what you've already put in, you're just changing that one line.
If we take-
Just some extra copies.
This budget number, which was last year's, add thirty-six hundred bucks in tomorrow, we're right there. Pretty damn close.
Well, you put thirteen grand in though already for the heating.
All right.
So you're thinking that we can take twenty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars off of this number? Are you okay?
I don't, I'm working from over. I don't have a copy of that, which is what we-
Can I take it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have now?
Now, this was, this is in all the holes now. No, all right. I'm sorry. All right.
Can we, can we go down each line and you tell me which is right and which needs to be changed? Is that the way to do it?
AC, okay. Yeah, that's the way to do it, probably.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to do that? To go, town office electric at the top stays at forty-five hundred?
Why don't we just address the lines that we're going to change?
Okay.
And every one of them.
Okay.
So it's the improvements on-
So the town office improvements.
How many lines down? One, two, three, four, five lines down, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
From fifty-five five, from fifteen-five to what?
Thirty-six hundred.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
And I don't think that changed anything.
The next line you want to change.
I think that's it.
I think so too. And we were at thirteen, so now we've got sixteen-six. No, I'm sorry. We have encumbered twenty-one one twenty-five. But eighteen, eighteen thousand two hundred is what we needed to do for that.
For the mini-splits, yeah.
Way. And so we need thirty-six hundred bucks.
Right.
Perfect. So that's going to change the, did you do the math there?
Doing it right now. That changes the bottom line of one forty-four nine thirteen to one three three zero one three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you satisfied with that?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, thirty-six. Twenty-four seven twenty-five, twenty-four seven twenty-five. So the numbers work both ways.
Yeah.
Okay. Should be more than that.
So the motion you're going to make is?
The motion I made is to, is to change town office improvements from fifteen-five hundred to thirty-six hundred. And, uh-
The grand total?
And the grand total for government buildings, which is accounted for one nine four, is now one hundred and thirty-three thousand and thirteen dollars.
You're happy with that, Chip?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the stated motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
So you've got the numbers, I can get copies of that for Tuesday's meeting?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the next issue you have.
Do we have another issue?
Anything else to be encumbered in?
Well, I've got a question. There was some conversation about encumbering money in conservation to use on the trailhead into the Great Meadow. And I know that Jack and Steve Wingate took a ride up there and kind of scoped it out. And Jack was, had requested pricing or costing from a couple of folks. I don't know if that came in. Did Steve discuss that at the last Conservation Commission meeting?
Briefly.
Yeah.
But no decision was made.
Okay, all right.
And you haven't heard anything, Karen, have you?
No, I haven't.
When I talked to Jack, which was two days ago, he- When I talked to Jack, which was two days ago, he had not received any, any pricing at this point. So. But, you know, the thought was with, with the remaining money in conservation from this year, some of that could be put toward some of the trailhead and trail construction. See, Scott. But he's got over $6,100 left in this year's budget.
What are your, what are your thoughts without any?
Well, he's, he's got some bills to pay though, that's-
Does he?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
That's my memory is that he was saying that he didn't really have six grand because we were asking him for some money for maybe there would be, or whatever, Parks and Rec. He said he thought he had just about.
And, you know, without a firm proposal-
It's pretty tough.
We're flying blind.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong, for conservation and all that.
Well, it's not as if they don't have plenty to do. Is the trailhead not, there's nothing there or?
Right.
He wants to build a parking lot or?
Well, that, that was the discussion is to create a small parking area there and then begin to work on the, on the trail.
And that's from the?
That's just down from the highway garage.
Right. On Sodom Road.
Yeah.
Lot of the basic weeds in there.
No.
It's an old stump. There's a boat in there.
Really?
But you make-
The only place we can go.
No, the, you make a valid comment is the Conservation Commission has done yeomanic work, but it still has a lot on its plate, especially with the watershed management plan.
Yeah, which just got approved by the city, or they got their approval.
And the executive.
And got funded, so.
Yeah.
That's going to take a little bit of time.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, they need to form a committee and feel that.
They're in the process.
So I don't see that one's going anywhere at this, at this point.
Well, if they come back with a form of a firm proposal in two weeks, we still have time to-
Do we, can we encumber funds from, from 2017 after the end of the year? Today, today's the end.
That's it.
Right?
Yep.
So.
I, yeah, and I think it's a good idea to play by the rules because it makes people, yes, understand.
I understand.
Right. Pushing the ball around.
Right, yeah. There are, there are plenty of areas, I guess, where I'd say things are not crystal clear. But my understanding is that the law is pretty-